City Council regular meeting at zero six hundred, or sorry, eighteen hundred hours or six P M. Sorry, when I read it off my phone, it's eighteen hundred hours.
Sorry, you're echoing.
Yeah, we're gonna give it a second to figure out. Oh, there it goes. Perfect. All right. So first, we will have the pledge allegiance. Vice Mayor Thomas, will you please lead us in the pledge allegiance? Thank you for that. Next up is roll call.
Councilmember Busby.
Present.
Councilmember Pride.
Present.
Councilmember Hudson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Here.
Mayor Hudson.
Present. And just so everyone knows, Councilmember Hanson is here with with us, but he is going through Zoom. So he is present and glad to still have you here. Gary.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I I had a mandatory, minor mandatory medical procedure this morning in low and yeah, it's this better I be here. So thank you for for putting up with me. I know it's it is inconvenient, so I'll keep my cheddar to a minimum. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
City Manager Marty, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are. There are no changes.
Okay. Next up, we do have a presentation tonight from Pioneer Energy Community Choice Aggregator. Tonight, we'll be receiving a presentation from Gina. Are you the one giving the presentation tonight? Okay, perfect. All right. Anything else I need to do?
I was simply gonna just remind the council. Go ahead, Gina. But I was just gonna remind the council that this is. If you recall, we had an initial presentation back in December with Pioneer Energy to discuss the possibility of community choice aggregation for purchasing our power and energy as an energy source. And what was agreed to is that we would do an assessment, if you will, to look at how the city of Willow's could would benefit from possibly pursuing community choice aggregation with power Pioneer Energy. This is tonight, the results of that assessment. And then after that, I'll be looking to the council to see if you want to give any direction to move forward with preparing an ordinance and resolution to that I would have to bring back at the very eleventh council meeting. So with that, Gina is the Director of Communications with Pioneer Community Energy.
Thank you so much. And good evening, Mayor Hudson and members of the council. I'd also like to introduce to you tonight two of my colleagues, Taylor Smith and Jake Campbell. They work with me day in and day out and are very familiar with this issue as well. So again, the purpose of tonight is to give you a presentation and inform you about the findings of the study that was co-commissioned with Glen County and the city of Orlando. So just as a reminder, Pioneer Community Energy is a joint powers authority. We are a community-owned, not-for-profit alternative to P G and E. We are one of twenty-five community choice aggregators in the state of California, and our focus is on ratepayer savings. To date, we have saved customers one hundred and eight million dollars since launching service in twenty eighteen. And in twenty twenty-five, we are projecting thirty-one million dollars in savings for our ratepayers. Again, those are, excuse me, our priorities are ratepayer saving and community reinvestment. So the money that we save our customers is reinvested back into the communities that we serve. We do that either through local power purchase agreements, through economic development projects, through, you know, programs that further help customers save money and through goods and services. Pioneer currently serves Eldorado and Placer Counties and the cities within them. We do have significant interest from many other communities throughout Northern California. To join Pioneer, that includes county Glen, Nevada, Sutter, and Tuolumne Counties, as well as the cities in them. So it would create a an expansion of Pioneer of thirteen new members. So for a little bit of background, the city of Willow's learned about Pioneer through jointly with Glen County and the city of Orlando. We came and did a presentation earlier in fall, and at that time, the city approved an impact assessment study, which really was meant to determine the financial feasibility of having the city join Pioneer Community Energy. The city, the study was co-commissioned with Orlando and Glen County, and it was conducted through the month of December. We received findings earlier this month, and we are proud to review them with you here tonight. Based on the findings and the actions of the council, we will then decide how best to move forward. So related to the study, there were three questions that really needed to be answered. First and foremost, we wanted to make sure that having the city of Willow's join Pioneer made financial sense. Our board, again, is very committed to ratepayer savings and really wanted insurance that our existing customers would not have to subsidize expansion. So we wanted to ensure that the dollars and cents penciled out so that we can still expand and we can offer ratepayer savings to existing customers and new customers. The other thing that was really important for us to know is that we, as a Pioneer, as a power procurement agency, could get the needed power resources to serve the increased load. Last, what we need to determine was the optimal timing for service launch, and the study did help us answer all of those questions, and we'll cover that. So a little bit about the study. The study was conducted by Pacific Energy Advisors. They're very well respected in the field. We, they did take into account two years of data from P G and E, and I would like to thank city staff for helping us get the data that we needed. They were very cooperative and very efficient in helping us. They, the study projected revenues from current rates, which actually are twenty twenty-four rates. Those rates were, had a projected average savings of seven percent. For twenty twenty-five rates, which were just adopted at our last board meeting and take effect March first, our average savings for customers is ten percent. In some areas, especially for our newest customers, some our savings is as high as twenty-four percent, and that would be for the city of Brass Valley and Nevada City. The other things that we took into account were the power supply, and there are three primary components to the power supply. One is energy, which we found is readily available. That's indicated by the green arrow. Renewable energy indicated by the yellow arrow is part of what is required by the state's renewable portfolio standards. It's the state mandates for going to sixty percent renewable by twenty thirty. In years past, there has been some considerable constraints in procuring renewable energy, largely because it just wasn't available. It was new technology. We are, the study did find that a lot of those bottlenecks are opening up. Permits are being approved. Projects are starting to come online, so we are seeing more and more availability of renewable energy. The challenge is there's a lot of competition for it. So that is something that we took into consider, into consideration in the findings. The other thing that is really important to consider is resource adequacy, often referred to as R A. R A is a regulatory mechanism that is required by the C P U C. It's designed to keep the lights on when the grid is stressed, and it requires us to buy fifteen percent more energy than we actually need. R A is, is tight right now. The markets are really, really tight. So that is something that we had to factor into the equation when we were thinking about ability to procure power and the timing. So this tells you just a little bit more specifically about the city of Willow's customer information. You have roughly three thousand customers, and they are divided among a variety of customer classes, residential, commercial and agricultural, and commercial and industrial, which includes ag and streetlight count. So expanding into the city of Willow's would represent an approximate two percent increase in our current energy load. Again, one of the things that we had to look at was whether or not the dollars and cents penciled out, and I'm really pleased to report that it did. I believe initially when we spoke, we thought that we may be able to swing an early twenty twenty-seven launch. But that is part of the fiscal year that would end in twenty twenty-seven, and the, so the the numbers just did not pencil out. We would not be able to get everything launched and also preserve savings. So what the study is recommending is a fall, so October twenty twenty-seven launch. That's indicated by fiscal year ending twenty twenty-eight. The reason we chose October is because the numbers didn't pencil out for a launch in for fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven. And if we were to launch at the beginning of twenty twenty-seven, we would be launching service during summer when rates are already really high. And so the study recommends an October twenty twenty-seven launch date, and that is consistent with all of the other territories that would be joining Pioneer. So back to the questions that this study needed to answer. Does it make financial sense to move forward? Yes, we can expand into Glen County and the cities therein with no financial impact to existing customers and protecting rate savings and offering rate savings. Do we have the power supply resources to serve Willow's? Yes, we can do that. The big question is whether or not it works for you to wait until October twenty twenty-seven, because that is the earliest we would be able to watch. So that brings us to next steps. So we're here tonight to brief you, and if you are interested in joining Pioneer, what we would need is both an ordinance and a resolution indicating your desire to join. The ordinance is required by the legislation that created C C A's, and the resolution is required by the C P U C and is included in the implementation plan. From there, if should you decide to join, we would file the implementation plan in March. We anticipate that it would take about ninety days for the C P U C to approve or deny the plan. We have no reason to believe that this plan would be denied. And then even after it is approved in late June, we would still come back to the city of Willow's to reaffirm one more time that you would like to join Pioneer. If something has changed, there's that last off-ramp for you. When the decision becomes binding, after that is when we begin procuring power on behalf of the city. So with that, I am wrapping up my presentation, but I'd be happy to take any questions that you might have.
I have a question. Your rate products sheet that you didn't address here on shows energy for Pioneer at ninety, under this example, ninety point eight two cents. And P G and E at ninety-six point five four, that's only five dollars and seventy-two cents. That's two percent savings. Yet you're telling there's seven, ten percent savings.
So this is an average, this is an average across rates. So if you were to look at, and I'm not sure if you can see the screen from the we, this shows our different products. So Pioneer offers two different products, our default product and a one hundred percent renewable product, and we are the only utility in the region that offers a one hundred percent renewable for those customers who choose it. What's important to know here is that we are on pace, we are in full compliance to meet the state's mandated R P S goals. And looking at this, our, both our default product and our green one hundred product are less expensive than P G and E, and even our default product has a higher concentration of renewables than P G and E. And this is based on twenty twenty-four rates.
So if we elect as a city to join, then it's up to the citizenry to join if they want to or not. Do they have to join?
So there is an auto enrollment component, and there are two reasons for that. One is when the legislation that created C C A's was passed, they wanted to ensure that all customers had the access to the benefits that C C A's could offer. The other reason, and it's much more practical, is if we are going to procure energy on behalf of the entire city, we need to be able to know how much to buy. Customers can opt out if they want to. We send notices sixty days before, up to sixty days after. In addition, we would work with the city, the civic organizations, the fraternal organizations to make sure customers are well informed that we are entering into the service area. They could opt out in advance. They can opt out at any point. It's the other opt-out page is right on the homepage of our website. It takes about thirty seconds. Once they opt out, the only catch is it would take one year before they could opt back into Pioneer once they opt out. And again, if they, if customers would like to stay with P G and E, they can. If they want to come over to Pioneer, we'd love to help them.
So in our agenda tonight, we have several solar power purchase agreements that we're looking at. Can you talk about how this is impacted by that or that is impacted by this?
Absolutely. So we do have more than forty-two thousand solar customers. So there's the customers who have solar and then power purchase agreement. We have forty-two thousand solar customers. We actually pay a half cent premium more on our cash outs for net generators. If a customer is a net consumer, they still get the same savings that Pioneer offers. We do not require a contract or a power purchase agreement. Whatever solar generation you are with P G and E, it rolls right over to Pioneer. So we are indifferent to one, NIM one, NIM two, or NIM three, and we pay out annually. As far as power purchase agreements go, we do always look to purchase locally when it makes sense and when we can.
So operationally, no difference?
Operationally, there would be no difference.
Thank you. I see to the mayor.
Gary, do you have any questions? I want to make sure that I chime in for you in case you're on mute.
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I I muted when I'm not speaking. No, I I don't have any questions. It's, you know, just have some to digest this for a while, I think. Like, you know, I appreciate Rick's comments just now. I'm along the same lines. There's very little savings, but it is good news about the solar customer. I like to think about it. You know, moving forward, any cost savings is a positive, but still, it's a lot to think about. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Matt?
So forgive me, I missed the December. When you say procuring power, is part of that or all of that going to P G and E, negotiating a rate, buying power from them, distributing it, or how does that work?
No, so we are completely independent of P G and E. So for, in the power equation, there's the generation portion, and that's the portion of the bill that we're talking about. So we go out and buy power on the open market, and then we send the power to the grid. Then it is distributed through P G and E's lines and poles. So customers are customers of both Pioneer and P G and E. And in terms of where we purchase our power, we purchase it on the open market and from many of the same sources that P G and E buys from. The difference is we don't have tremendous overhead. We don't have one hundred years of legacy costs. We don't have the litigation costs. So we are able to pass the savings on to customers.
Thank you. That power procurement and pricing at that power procurement, how often does that happen? Is it like fluid? Does it happen six months, every few years?
So we are always buying power. Our goal is to lock as much in into long-term contracts as we can, which is why the C P U C makes us wait one year after an implementation plan is filed. But as soon as we know that a jurisdiction is coming on, we start purchasing power, because the sooner we can purchase the power and lock into a long-term contract, the more we can save for our customers.
Okay. And then typically, what's one, like, what's the term on one of those long-term contracts, like?
So we go up to twenty years.
Okay.
We do at times have to buy power on the short-term market, though, say, for example, in the event of, you know, a really intense weather event. You know, there's a heat wave or something, we have to make sure we have, we go out and procure what we need.
Laura, you got anything to add?
Kind of along the same lines as Matt. You know, going forward, we just keep hearing P G and E's just gonna keep going up and up and up. And as you grow and get larger, you know, overhead might grow. How confident are you over the next twenty years that you're gonna be able to continue to be competitive with P G and E?
I'm very confident because it is the sole purpose of our board to keep rates competitive and lower than P G and E. And in fact, P G and E increased its rates this last year. Our last rate change, not only did we lower rates, we increased the savings.
About it. So I do have a couple of questions here. So you mentioned reinvestment through P P A's. What was, what does that look like?
So for example, some of our, in our current territory, Eldorado Irrigation District, we signed a thirty-seven million dollar contract with them to purchase power from them. We are working with P C W A, Placer Water, Placer County Water Agency. We look to buy RECs, which are renewable energy credits from local jurisdictions like S P I up in Lincoln. So we always prioritize what we can locally and, of course, then we start extending beyond. The other thing we are very interested in is community reinvestment, and we do have incentives for those who might be interested in building biomass or small hydro.
Okay. And those are for cities or entities that are currently with you, correct? Not?
That, that is correct.
Okay.
However, if you were to join, we would immediately start looking.
Yeah. And then when it comes to the billing, are there still like peak hours? When it, like, so is the billing essentially the same as P G and E is right now with peak hours and all that other fun stuff?
So.
Or is it more a flat rate?
That, that is a really good question. So P G and E has about one hundred and seventy-five different rate classes. We have ninety. One of the things that we do is try to match customers as closely as we can with what they had with P G and E. But one of the things we really pride ourselves on is exceptional local service. And so I will tell you, we've got a great customer care team. Unlike other customer care centers who build their metrics on call volume and call brevity, our metrics are built around customer satisfaction. So any customer that has questions about a bill wants to make sure they're actually on the right rate class, we will walk them through all of that. And it does not matter how long it takes or how many phone calls it requires to get customers the information they need.
That kind of answered my follow-up question. So if I'm one of your customers and I have a question on my bill, and I'm saying, hey, for some reason, my rate changed or something from last month to this month, I don't call the P G and E five thousand number. There'll be a, will there be a different number that shows up on our bill? Or is, so like, where the, where our customer is gonna be finding that number at?
So they can find it on the P G and E bill, because again, as customers of Pioneer, you're still a customer of P G and E. So you would find our number on the P G and E bill on, on the website. The other thing that I would like to assure the council is that if we were to come into the city of Willow's, we would, you'd see us well in advance of the service delivery, and we would work with any organizations, with the city, with, you know, we would do town halls. We would make sure customers understand as much as they can before service launch.
Right. I'm just thinking, you know, my grandma's calling, like, she doesn't, isn't able to get ahold of somebody, so I'm just wanna know where kind of direct those folks, you know, when they have questions.
We have a call center, and I will tell you, and I think my colleagues would affirm this, our customer care teams.
Okay. And then, so I'm noticing like you guys are kind of noted out over there in Placer County. Is that where your power is really coming from? Or are you, so my concern is, is California, right? We're great at having wildfires. Like, we're amazing at it. We get a gold star in it every, every year. So if there's a wildfire in that area and power goes out in that area, transmission lines are down, how are we getting our power to our area?
So, so the transmission and delivery is still with P G and E because they own the lines and poles that delivers it to customers. One thing that I will tell you is we do track, if there are outages, we track that very carefully. We do work with Cal ISO to see what the grid conditions are. That is part of Big's job. Every day, he kind of knows where the power is flowing and where it's not.
Okay.
So while we don't control the lines and poles, the one thing that we do is we really do monitor it, and if we know that there is some sort of threat, we do try to go actively let our customers know. It might not be much more than five minutes earlier than P G and E, but in a situation like that, five minutes really is a long time.
Right. And so then along those lines, you're, where you're purchasing the power from, let's say it's a dam. You know, let's say, let's say it was, for example, the Oroville Dam, right? They had their huge problem. Guess it's been longer than five years ago. You know, where the dam was about to blow out, and you lose your, and you lose your power source. What happens in a situation like that where, let's say, one of your main power sources that you guys buy power from goes out?
So we actually have a very good procurement team, and so we buy the power we need, and then we also buy a little bit. So we plan for contingencies.
Okay, so you guys have the contingency built in. Okay. So what is, so what is your guys' current opt-out percentage then with your current customers? I mean, are you seeing ninety-nine percent of people in? Are you seeing seventy-five, twenty-five?
It's a little bit different in each of our jurisdictions, and I will be candid with you. Part of that is we've learned, we've learned as we've gone along. For example, our overall participation rate is about eighty-seven percent.
Okay.
What we learned in our most recent expansion, which was Brass Valley and Nevada City, is, you know, we launched Eldorado during COVID. We could not go out. We couldn't do town halls. We couldn't meet with people. By contrast, in Brass Valley and Nevada City, when we were there all the time, we have a ninety-seven point two percent participation in those two areas.
Okay. And then for us, room for growth. I mean, we're a small town. We're looking to hopefully be expanding. You know, we have large facilities. We have, you know, Mansville. We have like the cow plant, places like that near and around us. If big facilities come into our area, I mean, you guys have the contingency built in, do they automatically jump right into that? That, that program?
We do have the opportunity, we have the capabilities to serve and to supply.
All right. I think that's all my questions.
I have one more follow-up question. And a wise man once told me, don't ever get into partnership without, a wise man once told me, never get into a partnership without knowing how to get out of a partnership. So what happens if we don't like where we are?
So in, in the event that the city decided it wanted to get back out, it can exit Pioneer through the resolution process.
That simple.
So there, there would be some timing considerations, because you have to also transition back over to P G and E, and the same way we have to procure power for you, they would have to plan for the power procurement. But it couldn't be that, it can be done through the resolution process.
Any other follow-up questions? Marty, you have something?
Just really quickly. So Gina, the next step would be for the council to consider approving a resolution and ordinance in February, both the first and second reading. Other than staff time and the council's time, there's no cost to the city, correct?
There is no impact to the city's general fund at any point. The only thing that the city has had, would pay for is the one-third of the impact assessment study.
And assuming the council were to approve the resolution and ordinance, if that was to go forward next month, there is another off-ramp. When is that off-ramp if they changed their mind after going through this process?
After the C P U C approves the implementation plans, we anticipate that would happen in late June.
Of this year.
Of this year, and before we begin procuring power. And we would come back to you before we do.
So there'll be another chance to present and the council to change their mind if they were to go forward next month?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
And that would be in summer.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time. And again, thank you to the staff for their help.
Yeah. Pleasure to counsel.
Do you want to see if the public has any?
Oh, sorry, public comment.
There is none.
Okay. The public comment, pleasure to the council?
To the microphone.
I think it's something to pursue. I mean, there's down, for cost savings, there's ways out. Citizens have a choice. I don't see any downside, honestly, in moving forward.
Competition is healthy for an economy.
I would agree.
So this is not discussion and action. I just need direction that I come back. Okay.
I think it's the council's idea that you pursue this and come back next city council meeting with the ordinance and resolution.
Thank you.
All right.
I agree. I agree, Mr. Mayor. So thank you.
Sorry, sorry, Gary. It's hard to remember that you're up there on the screen. All right.
No worries.
Next item is public comment and consent calendar. All matters of the con consent calendar are considered routine and are approved by one motion and vote unless council members or the city manager first request that a matter be removed for a separate discussion. And, oh, sorry. And action. Individuals wishing to address the city council concerning consent calendar items or regarding matters that are not already on the agenda are invited to make oral comments up to three minutes at this time. Please address your comments to the mayor and council members and not to staff and/or the audience. Any public comment not already on the consent calendar? Okay. Pleasure to the council?
Quick question. Does item 6C require a roll call vote?
Uh, no, it doesn't.
No, I did ask that question before the meeting started, so.
And I would move to approve as presented.
So I have a motion to approve the register approval, item 6B minutes approval, item 6C new appointments to Northern California City Self-Insurance Fund Board of Directors, item 6D annual development impact B report and item 6E council liaison to the planning commission. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Same sign. Motion passed. Uh, next item is item seven.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes.
I'm, I so I apologize for not bringing this up during change of the agenda, but I was wondering if it would be possible to move up the solar PPA because we do have a representative from Trinary on Zoom tonight who is here to speak. And just as a guest, I thought maybe we could move up that agenda item for them. That's possible.
We will be moving to item eight B solar power purchase agreement Civic Center and Fire Station with recommended action to authorize the city manager to execute a power purchase agreement. Joe, what do you have for us?
Good evening, council. So I've got Michael, forgive me if I'm wrong on the last name, Manello. He's the chief banking officer with Trinary on video here. I'm going to give a brief introduction. If you guys have questions, I'll pass it off to Michael so he can answer those for you. So as you mentioned, this item is the authority to execute a power purchase agreement to install roof-mounted solar at the Willow Civic Center, AKA here, and the Willow's Firehouse. The Willow's Civic Center will consist of a 47 kilowatt system and the firehouse will consist of approximately 37.4 kilowatt system. And we did secure a side letter for the Civic Center Power Purchase Agreement, which gets the, the promise of our roof being replaced prior to the the system being installed. The city would pay for that and then be reimbursed by, by radial after that construction is completed. So just to go over some rates here, the beginning rates of our power purchase agreement would be at about 18 cents a kilowatt hour. And that would escalate by 3% per year, reaching a total of approximately 37 cents at the end of the 25-year term. I'm in comparison. PG&E, the average bundled rate is currently 45 cents. And you can see in some of the comparison in the staff report we gave that during peak hours, our firehouse hit about 65 cents a kilowatt hour and was down around 44 after that. In that example, I think we achieved a cost savings of close to $1,000. We would have achieved across it, cost savings of $1,000 had we been at that reduced kilowatt hour rate. So with that, I will, I will pass it over to Michael if you wanted to say anything, or if not, we're both here for questions.
Good, good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. Thank you for having us and I'm at your disposal to answer any of the questions that you may have.
If I could just add, just really quickly, that for the benefit of the rest of the council and the public, I know that Vice Mayor Thomas and Councilmember Hanson are very familiar with this project. This project has been going on for quite some time. And getting to this point is no, nothing short of a lengthy milestone. But we have been working on this in conjunction with the wastewater treatment, solar panels. That project, the council's already approved and we're working on construction and moving forward with that. Trinary is also our partner on that solar array down near the wastewater treatment plant. So I just, I, I know maybe for some people, it might feel like this sort of dropped out of the sky and what are we doing? But we really have been back and forth with prior councils discussing this project for quite some time. Just wanted to provide that context. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Michael, for being here tonight. Pleasure to the council. Any questions, concerns, comments?
No, I'm not afraid to start. We have a solar two and a solar three. And attached to that, each one is an exhibit three that looks like boilerplate. Are they identical, one and two to three?
In my review, just prior to the meeting, no, there is section five, paragraph three of subsection F, it looks like in the force majeure section, the, the word reasonable in the reasonable control is in one document, but not the other. And it looks like that's a, an, an error or omission from prior negotiation in August of 2024 between general counsel for the long-term holder and I believe presumed to be consultant for Sean Cameron, which needs to be corrected.
Which one's correct?
I believe it's supposed to be reasonable.
Correct.
So my questions are going to go through the power contract based on its progression through the contract. Some of them might be staff, some of them might be yourself, but interconnection cost for the system is set for zero in the aggregate in the contract. Does that history and knowledge suggest that there is no connection cost?
But the inner connection costs ultimately were calculated into the, the proposed economics and the budgeted amount, which I believe inclusive for all three projects and the re-roof was about $280,000. We do not expect that there would be any additional interconnection costs that would be passed on to the city at this point. Meaning that the forecasted amounts would be under budget and not impact the agreement as is.
So what does it mean when it says will not exceed zero in the aggregate, zero dollars?
Sure, that, that we do not anticipate where there would be a circumstance that would cause us to come back and change because of additional costs unaccounted for and present a new increased rate to the city.
Pardon me while I make a note. So in, on exhibit two, it talks about the system size at 46.75 for this building Civic Center and 37.4 for the fire station. What is our current historical usage? Is that 90%, 100%, 105%? What is that number?
Very good. So the, the estimated delivery for the first system is about 78,000 kilowatt hours for one of the meters. The other one is just shy of 61,000. Compared to your annual usage, that's forecasted at just under 94%. So ideally, we want to right-size this by underbuilding the system so that you are not paying for something that has to rolling credit under the NEM two and then have to worry about recouping those costs later, right? So we're just under 100% offset.
And just to add to that too, I think the original agreement that we, the letter of intent back in 2023 stated that we'd be at least 90%. So we're kind of right in the middle of that.
94%?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Under exhibit three, paragraph 3D, it talks about production guarantee. It also talks about a degradation factor. Nowhere in this document could I find where degradation factor was identified or referred to. But what is the degradation factor and why isn't it in the contract?
I, I was surprised by that as well. It is a bold and capitalized term, which indicates that it should be defined. And it's referenced in a cover sheet, but there is no cover sheet. So that needs to be included. The degradation factor used in the industry is traditionally about one-half of 1%. And essentially that is the engineered calculated loss over the lifetime of a system where essentially the panels, you know, lose efficiency due to stress, mechanical stress, chemical stresses. And that's engineered into how a power purchase agreement is, is structured. So ultimately, that is missing. It needs to be included as a defining term for you. But just to set your expectation, right now, industry standard is a half of a percent per year on average.
For years. So over 25-year contact, we're down 12 and a half percent. 15%? If that, does it compound? It's compounding on the prior year's degradation?
Uh, it, it's, it's overall. So you would, you would calculate as, but you're, you're right, about 12 and a half percent for the lifetime of the system. Traditionally, you'll see, you know, maybe one, two or 3% in the first couple of years. And then it starts to level off, but that is, you know, the, the accepted engineering standard for degradation. In some cases, it may be even less, but that's a conservative valuation.
So is it one and a, or one-half of 1% on last year's production level? Or the 94%?
Correct, on, on the, on the prior year.
So the degradation factor compounds.
That's right.
Just added that the, that is the percentage that we entered into for the wastewater treatment plant agreement. So we can.
Just needed to know.
No, it's not in there, absolutely. And it's, it's something that we'll get added with the.
Also, on the production guarantee, it provides for reimbursement to us if you don't hit your 80%. And that's multiplied by price per kilowatt hour. Is that the price that we pay you or is the price that we pay PG&E because we didn't get the power we thought we were going to get?
It is, it is the price from the PPA. It's not the avoid, what the potentially avoided cost would be from the utility. So you're, to answer that question another way, you're not fully reimbursed for your actual cost for the replacement of energy, should you have to procure it from the utility as opposed to it being generated from the system. It's a very good point.
Okay, so the production guarantee is on a three-year rolling average? Is that the way it's calculated?
In this example, yes.
The kilowatt electric energy produced by the solar facility during the last 36 months. Even a three-year period. The solar facility has produced less than 80% of the estimated solar energy output is reduced by the degradation factor, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Why is it a three-year average and not based on the, the year that we just lost?
Excellent question. Primarily, it's a function of what conservative sources of capital, a banker financier with limit. And then in addition to that, it also is supposed to account for variability in weather that may be seen that's localized. So they use a three-year, two, three-year average. Although the expectation is that the system will actually overperform. They want to account for, you know, variability and, and what you might experience in season from year to year.
So under 6D, 7I, it talks about system breakdown? And how does that affect the performance guarantee on a three-year average?
Sure. So fundamentally.
Down and it's out of service. And, and the reason I ask this question, because we've experienced it, you're probably familiar with our experience at the wastewater treatment plant. The system's non-functioning. So I'm trying to make sure we don't have the same problem going forward.
Absolutely understood. And I'm familiar with that agreement because I, I did read it for context to try to support this project. Ultimately, the, you know, the long-term owner, their incentive is to make sure that the system has as much uptime as possible for, for the sake of revenue, right? And to meet whatever obligations are on the other side of that. The components are, you know, in common use, you know, to say off the shelf. And so ideally, if the system is not performing, there's no revenue to meet that obligation. And so the incentive to make sure that we have, you know, the highest percentage of uptime is there from a financial perspective. But secondary to that, to answer your other question is, if the system breaks down, what would be the, the recruitment to the city? It would be if on an annual basis, it went below that 80%. Right? So there's, there's really the two parts, right? There's the financial incentive for one party, but on the other side, you, you don't see the, the true up unless it is on an annual basis that it's below 80%. So if it was down for two weeks, which would be an unlikely scenario, but it's certainly possible. If that doesn't impact the project to go below 80% for that year, you would not see a true up for that portion.
Just a bookkeeping or a scribbler, I think five C references section 2C, section 11, and it's probably should be section II.
Agreed. And thank you for bringing that to our attention.
So you're talking about this installation system within 365 days of the effective date. Is that a reasonable timeline?
It is for unforeseen delays. The most common delays would typically be receiving interconnection permission from a utility. In some cases, if there is a study or deposit that was required, you know, we are at, to some degree at them. The mercy of the utility, although they like to purport that there is a service level of agreement. We've all experienced what that may be in, in real life. Secondary to, you know, permitting, environmental or any, or other regulatory prerequisites. 360 days is, is more than sufficient. And I would say that we, we could expect that things would move forward within half that time as far as, you know, construction on the ground, if not even shorter than that. But it allows us the opportunity to make sure that all those other conditions are met, which can be largely out of our control and yours.
Well, that was going to be my next question. So what is your actual thought process of when you might have this live?
As far as completely constructed?
Yes.
Or the beginning of construction, completely constructed.
Producing energy, us and we're saving money.
Yep. I would say within nine months, if not sooner. Six to nine months.
This, does you, does your system have a way to monitor the production from this system on a regular basis?
Yes, all the systems that we put in place have intelligent software where we're able to monitor in real time and even share that information directly with you. And if you wanted it, you know, displayed on a TV panel and city, city offices, that could be done. But monitoring is, is real-time diagnostics are happening, you know, multiple times a second based on, you know, what is expected from the engineering.
Okay. The genesis for that question, it says purchaser shall notify you within 24 hours of the discovery of the. Okay, Chris. The genesis for that question, it says purchaser shall notify you within 24 hours of the discovery of the. Any material fitness malfunction of the system. We wouldn't know that typically until we got a bill.
I would, yes. Yes, that's true. Or in the event that you didn't receive power for some reason. Or somebody, you know, God forbid, somebody, somebody bran their car through the solar field. Sometimes it happens, but yes, more than likely, we're going to know before you will.
Okay. And the following questions are not intended to be making a statement about your folks. You have a provision in here to assign the contract. And our wastewater treatment plant is not performing based on the effects of an assignment of the original. Provider. And so under default remedies, and while I'm not concerned about. The city willows defaults because we control those, we don't control yours. Should you or your successor go bankrupt? By reading the agreement. It says that we can terminate the, the contract. Further, it states. That there's a way to go about doing that. And that would be under paragraph 11. B. II for the termination. II, paragraph two for the termination by purchaser. And then under paragraph C, II mitigation obligation, this, the last one seems to override and undo what the. The second one says, so I'm. Seeking clarity on those and you might not have the ability to answer that at this point in time.
It's a great question. I, I read through that one several times for common understanding. But it's something that I will have to bring back to council. For perhaps a more fair language statement.
I read it and I couldn't put my hands on it. It just seems like there's 14 ways to make sure that you folks get the termination payment should something go sideways. And that's the way the contract was written. And I understand you're doing it so because you're in business, but. I didn't understand that provision. And then under the last one, paragraph 12B, it talks about persons purchasers representatives, representations and warranties. I don't see where there's any sellers warranties. Why is that?
Also, an excellent question. The, the general warranties are limited in, in section 12D. But generally speaking, it would be the performance guarantee. Because the equipment is owned ultimately by the seller and the other warranties are used for the improvement of that facility. Potentially to the city's benefit. But I have not seen where there's any warranties or representations typically other than. The delivery of power and a guarantee to a percentage of that power, other than the resolution. Type agreements. So in the agreement, in, in this agreement specifically, 12D or no, no other warranties listed. Other than 12A and 12C.
I think the rest of my questions probably need to be answered by our city attorney. So I will, I will stop now. Fur back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any other questions? Laurie, you got any?
Yeah, I, I've got a couple. So first off, insurance coverage. So I, you know, obviously you guys are the owners of the property for the term of the contract. And there's some, we should start at insurance coverage liabilities or, or coverage limits and aggregate limits. But being that one of these, one of the buildings that we're proposing has some, some. Pretty expensive and pretty hard to get vehicles should some sort of catastrophe happen. You know, are there known limits that aren't outlined here if we ask for some really high aggregate limit to cover all the fire trucks?
I imagine that, that that can be requested typically in the agreements, you know, the, each party. Covers their, you know, their, their own requirements. And that they're, they're segregated specifically for that purpose, meaning we don't know what you might be having under your roof. Per se, at any one time. If there was a request for larger insurance in aggregate than, and it's not a. Severed portion, then that's something that we can take back and look at.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll probably chat with city staff just on layers of protection. Obviously, insurance is always layered and everything like that, but. Being that, you know, it's one of these buildings has a lot of really expensive equipment. I just want to make sure we've got some coverage. My next question would be in operations and maintenance. Rick kind of touched on it a little bit in, you know, there's not a lot of financial recourse. Until we dip under that 80% number, right? But there's a lot of, there's a lot of money between 94% and 80% in power usage. So obviously, that there's in the system benefits. Mentioning that the maintenance is under your care for the entire term of the contract. But what's that process look like? What are the limits? What's the fine print on what counts as maintenance? Or is it going to become a, oh, you guys didn't do this, so we're not covering it kind of thing?
Sure. So in, in general, operating and maintenance is going to be anything that relates to. The efficiency of the system, the cleanliness of the system that, that impacts solar irradiation. And the generation of the system. The most common component that you would see of O and M would be. Washing panels as needed, which can be anywhere from two times a year to four times a year. That's based on geography. It's based on, you know, how urban. You know, the, the installations may be, if this is on the firehouse roof, if those engines are diesel and they're outputting. You know, soot and any type of grease that may require it further washings. So again, the financial incentive is. Since these can be monitored in real time, whatever is, is needed to ensure that those things are kept properly. Is, is general O and M. And that's, you know, not a significant cost. The other part of what we model is that some components do have a lifetime. Shorter than the 25 years. Those might be. Inverters, if they're not string inverters, you know. Warranties can be purchased and may have been purchased in our proposed model from anywhere from 15 to, you know, 20 years. For those components, but we do calculate a fund so that if something goes down, we replace those as well. In general, anything else that would be, you know, damage, you know, from environmental degradation, rust, et cetera. Is, is something that's typically expected for on O and M and washing. And if there's problems, then we get those addressed at that point. So really, as far as maintenance that's required of the city. It's just to preserve the solar insulation, the ability for these systems to receive sunlight. And that not, you know, intentionally or accidentally damaged them.
Thank you.
Gary, you got any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Yeah, a couple of questions and, and a comment. Yeah, thank you for the information and presentation tonight, Michael. And as City Manager Marty Brown indicated, Vice Mayor Thomas and I have been intimately involved with Trinary Energy in discussion. With your firm, starting with the wastewater treatment plant. And I'm happy to report that Trinary Energy today has, has been outstanding to deal with. So thank you, Michael, you and your firm for working with us and sticking with us because you could have cut and run a long time ago. So, but I appreciate Rick's questions over the, over the contracts. I'm extremely supportive of this. Trinary has proven that they've, they've been a good partner. I, I feel very. You know, sincerely, I feel, you know, you know, very good about that. I think it's a solid firm. Of the five PG&E accounts that I have, one of them on my, my personal home where I'm at, my office right now, I have solar, I bought it myself. I wouldn't purchase our purchase agreement for a home, but. Ownership would be the best way to go. However, for city municipal operations of our size, that would be extremely costly. And there's no way we could afford it. So I am in favor of the power purchase agreement philosophy. As we've done with wastewater treatment plant for the city hall and, and fire station. Buildings. That's just locking us in at, you know, a, a, a very affordable set rate of power period. So have, you know, and I think, I think the PPA is the only way to go from a city standpoint. Like I said, I'd be in, if I didn't say this, excuse me, I, I think my head's still pretty clear from earlier this morning. A little outpatient procedure, but. Anyway, the, I agree with the, the minor amendments that Rick has, has brought up. I do know that our city attorney and city manager have reviewed this contract extensively. I have as well. I have a lot of faith in, in those individuals and. My question would be, I'd give the city attorney, Carolyn Walker. Hello, Carolyn. Carolyn, I know you reviewed the contract. Are you comfortable with the aspects of the contract as such presented in general?
Yes, and just so the council's aware, Sean Cameron, one of the partners at my firm, actually is a contract specialist. And he's been working on this particular contract specifically. For, I think. A long time. So he would have all the more detailed answers for you if you have specific details. I think. But ultimately, yes, I'm confident that, that this is. Protects the city and Sean, you know, has a fine eye for contracts. So I am confident in this contract.
Okay, you're, Carolyn, you're very good at, you know, I, I, I'm. Comforted by, by that aspect as well. And Rick mentioned it, you know, years ago in 2010. When solar was in its inf- infamacy here in this area, we bought a state of the, we bought into a, as you know, Michael, Trinary, you've, you, you're. You've come to our rescue on the wastewater treatment plant. We, we bought a state of the art, so to speak, solar system that produced, that worked fine for a couple of years. And then we saw what happened. It trailed off. Definitely don't know that. So brought up monitoring. Michael, on your monitoring. Aspect of the power production. Do you utilize N-phase or do you have your own system? Or what type of an application do you use for your monitoring?
A combination thereof. If the specific one that's proposed, I can come back for you. Different ones serve different purposes. And sometimes that's a function of who the long-term holder is. Who they may prefer from a portfolio standpoint, but I can come back to, to you with that answer for these projects specifically.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think we, we definitely need to know that information, have that information. And would, and would city staff have the monitoring app, applications as well for both the fire station and city hall? The production output on a, on a, on a data, you know, right, you know, in other words, you know, on our, on our phones or. PCs and monitoring app that we can dial in and make sure it's working properly. The reason I ask. Is I utilized from, for 10 years ago when I bought into solar, I've been very happy with this, happy with the firm. I, I contracted with, bought my system with, with an outstanding firm. However, I ran into an issue with N-phase. I won't go into that now. That was very recently and I just resolved it a month ago. So part of the contract was that the firm was going to monitor day by day my power output. Make sure the system was operating at peak performance under contract. And guess what? I went six weeks, six weeks, November and December, zero output and I was not advised at all. So I'm, I'm handling that right now. That's my problem, right? But I do have, I have N-phase application, you know, on my phone. And which now it's up and running fine. It was nothing more than a software issue. But the bottom line is the contract wasn't adhered to. So my question, you, will Trinary diligently? Monitor the city willows power output production? And if there's a problem, resolve it immediately? Or are we going to be caught by, I think you were, one of my colleagues asked you kind of a, you know, similar question a couple of minutes ago. So is your firm going to actively be monitoring the power production authorized?
Yes, that, that's, that, that is our, our standard operating practice. And at the end of the day, you know, unlike a, a large group, if, if it's not up and running, I won't be retiring.
Well, and with that, I. Will, will this system involve an app for city staff to monitor? Did you answer that yes or no or maybe?
I, I, I need to come back to you as far as to the specifics. It would make sense that, that you would have real-time data. You know, there's no reason to shy away from the democratization of information for something, one, that you're paying for. Two, something that, you know, you support and you're proud of, and you want to share those details. So, but I will need to come back as far as to the specifics of. You know, what type of access would be provided and how easy it would be for, you know, anybody in the city staff or city management office. You know, to be able to get into that.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I like, it'd be great if we could know that monitoring aspect as well, just to know it, check some balances. So, no, yes, I'm in favor of this and, and the roof replacement for city hall is still in, part of the contract, correct? Still there, correct? If we move forward with this.
That's correct.
Yep, that's, that, I, I just wanted, I just wanted to make. I saw, I read that and, and I just wanted to have you, have, have you say that, okay? So that's, that's a good thing. I think, you know, I'm in favor of moving forward. I, obviously, I think some minor amendments need to be made to the contract that have been brought up this evening. Everybody's protection. And you mentioned, Michael, and this is my last, last comment, you, you mentioned panel cleaning and, and that's on us. I clean mine every six weeks unless it's been raining. And sure, there's a little added, added expense to that. And you mentioned diesel. We're an egg-based community. We're surrounded by diesel. Our issue here is, is soil and dirt. The air is dirty. Okay, we just had. You know, 10 inches of rain here and, and, and five weeks of sunshine with north wind and my panels are. Are, you know, my, my black panels look like they're almost white just after a month of, a month of sunshine. So. You know, and, you know, it's, this is part of having solar panels, I think. Anyway, no, I, I'm, I'm in favor of, of the concept moving for Trinary. And Michael, thank you to your. For your information tonight. And thank you to Trinary for sticking with us. All the ups and downs that we initially started discussing this, this solar issue with the wastewater treatment plant some time ago. So thank you very much. That's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Laurie, you said you had another question?
Just a really quick question on the roof replacement. So if we're going to go live and have installation complete, I think you said nine months or sooner. We still have to go out to bid for the roof and get that done. And then curious what the timeline is for the reimbursement. Obviously, it's going to be a cash flow issue for the city to put the money out for the roof and then wait to be reimbursed for how long?
Yeah, I don't have those specifics. It would be, I don't think those were included in the side letter themselves. And I don't know if Michael will have any information on that, but I highly doubt it.
I'm not privileged to that right now, but it is something that I'm adding to my notes.
And I would imagine we could start with the fire station while we're roofing city hall. I just was kind of curious how that timeline was going to play out. We don't have to go out to bed and do that whole process.
Yes, yep. Yeah, kind of a leapfrog system.
Perfect. Well, Michael, thank you for being on here tonight and taking all of our questions. And taking the time to be here. I do have one quick question for you. On that 80% that you have down. As part of where to go here, as a production guarantee. Is that, what is that based off of that 80%? Is that off our first year? Is that a collective of the three years like you were stating?
It's the forecasted amount, including the calculation against the degradation. So, so as time goes on, that number gets smaller. However, the, the degradation would, would follow the 80% with the reduction that's, that's engineered or expected into the system.
So the 80% does also go along with that degradation, degradation calculation, sorry. As well.
That's, that's correct. There, it, it, there's an attrition there. Yes.
Okay, perfect. That's what I was kind of curious about. So, so essentially what you're saying is that year 25. We might only be producing 85% of what we initially started. But then that 80% guarantee is based off of 80% of that 85, not based off of year one, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, awesome. Those are my only questions. Any more questions? Yes.
It pleases the council. I'm sensitive to the fact this is a big project. You had a lot of really great substantive questions this evening. And I, and some of them we couldn't answer. And so I, I'd actually like to recommend that we continue the item and bring it back. With an attachment that answers all the questions you heard tonight, some of them verbally, some of them we couldn't answer, but we could with more time. If, you know, if that's something that you would prefer doing. I, I would recommend that actually. I think it'd be better for you before making that decision and also for the public.
I would agree because we're looking at.
I would agree, because we're looking at committing the city for twenty-five years. We need to make sure we do it right.
And a bad experience with solar before, make sure we do it correctly.
Okay, I believe the continuation still requires a motion.
You can just direct us to continue it. We'll try to bring it back at the next one. If not, if we if we need more time to answer the questions, then we wouldn't bring it back till the March meeting. But hopefully, we can bring it back to, sorry, the February twenty-fifth meeting. But hopefully, we can bring it back on the eleventh. I just not sure how long it's gonna take us to, you know, bring all of this together. But I'd like to bring it back as soon as possible while it's still fresh in everybody's minds.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I agree with that. You know, there's a number of amendments need to be made and, you know, questions, obviously, I agree.
Okay, um, any public comment on tonight's agenda item? Okay, so we'll continue that till our next meeting. Perfect. All right, now we're gonna, thanks, Michael. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and city council members.
All right, now back to public hearing, item seven A.
Nope, 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 nope.
What?
We jumped forward to, uh.
We jumped forward to item eight B, and we skipped item eight A. We'll come back to it.
Yeah, you're right.
Seven A.
Public hearing is your right.
Yes.
My bad.
I'm already confused enough up here, okay? Um, let's see here, item seven A, public hearing. All matters in this section of the agenda are formal public hearings and will be acted on individually. Once the mayor opens the public hearing, members of the public may request to speak. When you are called on by the mayor, please state your name clearly for the audio recording. If you have any documentation that you would like to be distributed to the council, please give to the city clerk for distribution. Item seven A, summary abatement of three-three-five North Shasta Street, and I will hand it over to Fire Chief Nathan Monk.
Good evening, council. Uh, the first thing to uh, get out is technically. Um, while this could have been a public hearing and is listed as a public hearing on the agenda. Um, since Mr. Bronner, the property owner, did not formally request a public hearing, doesn't have to be a public hearing. It's just a um, discussion and action item. The way the municipal code reads is that when we give that notice and final notice of you need to pay the bill. Um, or their option as an appeal is the public hearing and um, that process. And they have ten days to do it after the notice is issued. Um, they never formally, after uh, posting at the property and sending certified mail, they didn't request a public hearing. So this is actually just gonna be a discussion and action. Um, some background. Um, back in May of two, or correction, in December of two thousand and twenty-three, the city um, red-tagged the property at three-thirty-five North Shasta. Uh, for multiple reasons, including health and safety code, building code, um, as it was a grossly dilapidated structure. And uh, marked as an unsafe structure, so we ended up having to red-tag it. Um, in May of two thousand and twenty-four, we got a nice, good windstorm. And a significant uh, portion of about a sixty-foot tall hackberry tree that was about forty inches, uh, DBH. Uh, DBH stands for diameter of breast height. Um, fell, it fell partially onto the neighbor's house, out into the street and onto the sidewalk. Um, and then on to uh, the actual structure at three-thirty-five, and you could see uh, additional cracks in the limbs that hadn't fallen yet. Um, fire responded. Um, we were able to cut the limbs out of the roadway and mostly off the sidewalk. Um, but we really weren't able to do much about the limbs that were still hanging on the house because of, it was a very complex. Um, saw work that was required. Um, we stood more chance to damage the existing structure by trying to cut it. Because things fall, we don't have the pulley systems. Uh, after discussing discussing the issue, uh, the next morning with uh, the building inspector, uh, Mr. Paxton. Uh, the city attorney, city manager, and some other peer fire chiefs and explaining the situation of, uh, since we've red-tagged the building. And the threat to uh, public safety, including the neighbors, um, that it was a liability for us to not um, continue. To not finish abating the hazard. Uh, we contracted with Lalo's Tree Service to come in. I think they came in uh, forty-eight hours later. That was as soon as they could get there, uh, to remove the tree the rest of the way. Uh, that was at a cost of ten thousand eight hundred dollars. Um, the additional uh, costs that you see there is for the uh, cost of the emergency. Uh, abatement that the fire staff did, as well as all of my time in the code enforcement action and reaching out. And um, trying to get in contact with Mr. Bronner, researching the code, um, and putting um, the invoice together. Um, right after we did the enforcement action, uh, following municipal code, we sent um, an invoice to uh, Mr. Bronner. Um, at the three-three-five North Shasta address, uh, which he was still known to come back and try to live in, his new apartment that he was at. And we also, uh, and we sent those certified. Um, we've received no communication with him since uh, May of two thousand and twenty-four. And so what uh, staff is asking tonight is you guys to confirm the cost of the abatement. Basically, what you're doing with this resolution is uh, confirming that we had a valid reason to do the emergency abatement. Um, confirming the cost of the abatement and then authorizing us to place it as a lien on the property tax roll. Uh, to recover the costs through the tax process. Uh, if not paid by, there is a small change. The resolution says January twenty-fourth. That would have been correct the last meeting. Um, I missed a date. When I was updating dates, it should read February seventh. That would be ten days, so next Friday. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Okay, uh, quick question of clarification. So Carolyn, is this allowed to be discussion items? It's a discussion and action item? We can act on this then tonight?
Yes, um, it was brought to my attention tonight that. The respondent did not request a hearing, so that.
Okay.
For the current meeting code, um, the way that a public hearing would be triggered. It's not a bad thing to have a public hearing, if that's what the council wants to do, but it's not necessary in this situation.
Can we make a decision tonight, though, if we do do a public hearing? Or does that have to come back?
Question, and I think you're asking if it's not agendized as an action item, that could be a problem, yes.
Okay.
We could do it as a public hearing.
So we can continue as a public hearing, okay?
I would do that.
Are there uh, any questions for Chief Monk from the council?
No.
Or city staff? All right, um, with that being commented or said, we will open this up to public hearing at. Seven seventeen. As there's been adequate time, opportunity for public to be heard, I close the hearing for further public comment at seven eighteen. Uh. All right, any questions, comments, concerns on this?
Mr. Mayor, I've moved the resolution of the city council, the City of Willow's, confirming the cost of abatement for emergency summary abatement at three-three-five North Shasta Street. Declaring such cost as a special assessment be approved.
I have a first.
With the change of the date to February seventh.
Change of the date.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the resolution as amended. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Okay, I have a first and second. Uh, will this be a roll call vote?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, discussion?
Oh, sorry, further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Gary.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Yeah, I just, I just like take this opportunity just to thank Keith Monk. Uh, building official Wyatt Paxton, or Willow's Felder Works team, and city manager Marty Brown, and our city attorney Carolyn Walker, for all of their. Outstanding, hard and diligent work, uh, abating this uh, disaster. Okay, thank you, uh, to the Willow's team. Good job.
Perfect. Thank you, Councilmember Hanson. Sorry, I read Gary up there, so that's the first thing I say. I don't, don't stick to quorum there, so, um, any other?
That's my, that's my name, Evan. It's okay.
Any further comments? Perfect, first, second. This will be a roll call vote, I believe? Correct or no? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passed, five-zero. Next, we are going forward again. And next we have discussion and action calendar, item eight A. This will be for the planning commission vacancy and appointment process. I'll hand this over to Marty Brown.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. This is, um, a- as you may recall, uh, former planning commissioner Holly Meyer resigned effective December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. And so we have a vacancy on the planning commission. Uh, the process that is um, outlined in the code is to appoint a ad hoc committee of the council. To uh, conduct interviews with applications that we would receive after we, you know, advertise and do an announcement. And run an advertisement for thirty days, seeking applications to the commission. And then go through an interview process with the ad hoc of the council. And then the count, that ad hoc committee would come back and make a full recommendation to the full council for that appointment. So this would start this process, and the recommendation is to make an appointment of two council members to the ad hoc committee tonight. And then move forward with a January twenty-eighth, um, well, that's today, then move forward on the thirty-first with a notice. Um, of the vacancy, publicly noticing and advertising that. And then, um, going forward and accepting uh, letters of interest and or applications. Uh, between February third and February fourteenth, the two-week window. And then moving forward from there to, uh, once received and after the deadline, conducting interviews and bringing back to the full council for appointment and approval on the February twenty-fourth. Sorry, February twenty-fifth, uh, council meeting. And we've attached the application and the publication notice for your convenience, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions for city manager Marty?
None.
Okay, at this point, we will take a motion?
I'd be interested in serving or be willing to serve on the ad hoc committee.
Anyone else want to volunteer to be appointed to the ad hoc committee? I feel like you're really thinking about staying here.
From a fire hose, as it is, man.
Um, I'll, uh, I'll volunteer myself if Rick or Gary do not want to step up and take that mantle. So.
I would appreciate that, thank you.
I I second that. Thank you, Evan.
Thank you.
Perfect, so, um. We have a motion to uh, appoint Lori and myself as members of the ad hoc committee?
That can just be the consensus you have.
Just a consensus on this one?
Motion. And then we'll just move forward with the process and notify you as the applications come in.
Okay.
Sounds good.
I consent.
All right.
And I would just send the application process. Let's make sure we get it out on social media, just as another way of, through the City of Willow's, just trying to reach more people with that.
All right, and that brings us to comments and reports, item nine A, council correspondence. I didn't receive anything in my box other than a letter inviting uh, myself and I'm assuming other city council members to the annual. Um, four-H presentation evening for us to be uh, essentially judges for their presentations. So other than that, that's all I have, which that'll be on February seventh. Um, I believe it's at WIS. Or normally it's called, so I actually didn't see an address on here for it. So, but that's all I have as far as mail in my inbox, so.
We don't.
Okay, perfect. Uh, city council comments and reports, uh, councilmember Hanson, we'll start with you.
Yeah, I'm gonna surprise you real short. I have nothing to report. Thank you, uh, uh, putting up with me and allowing me to zoom. Uh, much appreciated. I know it's not inconvenient, but thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Hanson. Councilmember Busby, anything to add?
Uh, yeah, went through the uh, LA Cities uh, council this uh, this past week, learned a lot or. Uh, have a lot of questions. Uh, gonna spend some time with Marty getting uh, just uh, further acclimated and everything like that. Um, and then I did want to report a uh, sat in, uh, last meeting, I did not report, uh, because I'm new. Uh, sat in on the library board, uh, uh, meeting a few weeks ago. Um, you know, uh, the. We're seeing about eleven hundred people come through the library every uh, every month on average, or that was the average throughout the year. Um, and then there's uh, uh, requests for uh, child librarian, which uh, we're gonna hear about during the uh, uh, budget planning.
Perfect, thank you. Councilmember Pride?
I've not really been to any meetings, although um, councilmember Busby and I are gonna be meeting next Thursday to start talking about economic development. And what that might look like for the city and just start having some discussions about process or wherever that conversation takes us. To report back.
Perfect.
That's it.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Uh, yes, uh, last Tuesday, um, Mr. Busby and I held our first finance and measure I oversight committee meeting. Uh, it was um, a public meeting and recorded, and we basically went over where we are and what we've done. Um, and where our finances are, and we will be hosting our second one in April. And that'll be actually a town hall meeting where um, we're developing our agenda for that. Which basically, I'm hoping to have staff tell us what is actually one hundred percent our need on. Uh, what we need to do with our measure I money, the actual needs, and then we will open up the floor to the public to share what they would like to see happen. So we can bring that back to the full council for discussion and try to pu- fit some of that into the actual budget going forward.
Okay.
Uh, not much attended, but we did have a few folks and uh, was happy to get through that meeting and look forward to the next one.
Uh, if I could just add, I, I, we were planning actually to agendize a more formal update from the uh, committee to the council as written in the bylaws. And as part of that meeting to attach the minutes, um, along with answers to several of the questions that you had for us at the meeting as well. So, uh, we were planning to post that on the, um, add that to the second meeting in February, if that's okay with the committee.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Perfect. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, for me, I don't have a whole lot, just a couple thank yous. Uh, wanted to say thank you to our surrounding fire jurisdictions for their response to the structure fire we had um, on the six-hundred block of North Shasta. Um, yesterday morning, um. Luckily, nobody was home. Um, however, there were some uh, some loss of life. There were two pets still in the house that were not able to be rescued um, at the time. Um, and then later that day, Willow's did uh, return the favor to Orland with a response of two engines and a water tender with a total of seven personnel. Uh, responding to a um, escaped control burn um, up just north of Orland. So, um, thank you to the volunteers that took their time to uh, respond and both show up for our structure fire from out of the area. As well as those that um, went to go support our local jurisdictions. Also, if you've seen a lot of the roadwork happening on Wood Street, um, I read in the paper, this is not firsthand knowledge, this is from the paper. That they are actually um, working on getting broadband set up. Uh, the fiber optic cables ran before they come through and redo the Wood Street um, section of one-sixty-two. So, they're trying to do all the the work before they start tearing up the road, so that they don't have to come back through and tear up the brand-new road. So, um, if you're wondering why there's so much construction going on, that's why. Um, I think they've done really well with uh, managing the traffic, uh, as far as people still being able to get through town, so. Um, with that, that is all I have, and we will move to city managers' report.
I do not have a report this evening.
Okay, um, with that, we will go into closed session, um, item ten A, pursuant to government codes, section five-four-nine-five-four-point-three. The public will have an opportunity to directly address legislative body on the item below. Prior to the council convening into closed session, public comments are generally restricted to three minutes. Is there any public comment before we go into closed session? Okay, seeing none. We will be going into closed session at seven-twenty-nine. It's another first.
Sorry, I just thought you were a professional.
You ready? Perfect. All right, we are returning back from closed sash, closed session. Um, city council was given direction from staff, or sorry, received information from staff and gave direction. Um, with that, uh, meeting will be adjourned at. Eight forty-five. Eight forty-five. Have a good night. Was I supposed to say what time we came back into session?
You can, but you're fine.